Good morning, everyone. The Delaware County Commissioner Meeting for August 29th, 2024 is now in session. Would you stand and join me in the place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning, everyone. I'm Gary Merrill, President of the Board this year. To my right is fellow Commissioner and Vice Chair Barb Lewis, and to my left is fellow Commissioner Jeff Ben. And of course, we have our Administrator and Deputy Administrator with us today, Tracy Davy, Don Houston, Eric Hostetler, and our clerks, Brandy and Jennifer. Let's begin.
Resolution number 24-675, in the matter of approving electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held August 26, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, a discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 24-675. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
We do not have any public comment today. That brings us to item number three, resolution number 24-676, in the matter of approving purchase orders and announced certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR 0828 and memo transfers in batch number MT APR 0828.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 24-676. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-677, in the matter of granting annexation petition from Powell Community Improvement Corporation requesting annexation of 2.052 acres of land in Liberty Township to the city of Powell.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, a discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 24-677. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-678, in the matter of acknowledging receipt of annexation petition from Agents for the petitioner Aaron Underhill Esquire, David Hodge Esquire, and Eric Sartman Esquire requesting annexation of 93.1 acres of land in Trenton Township to the city of Sunbury.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 24-678. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-679, in the matter of a transfer of a liquor license request from Darner Enterprises doing business as Hammer &amp; Nails Louis Center to ODAA Enterprises doing business as Hammer &amp; Nails grooming shop for guys and forwarding to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control with no objection and no request for hearing.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, a discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 24-679. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-680, in the matter of approving travel expense requests.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Lewis, taken by Commissioner Benton, discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 24-680. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-681, in the matter of scheduling a special session on Monday, September 9th, 2024 at 8:30 a.m. for adjourning into executive session for consideration of employment, compensation of a public employer, public official, and for collective bargaining.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 24-681. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-682, in the matter of scheduling a special session on Monday, September 16th, 2024 at 8:30 a.m. at the Delaware County Fairgrounds for adjourning into executive session for consideration of employment and compensation of a public employer, public official, and for collective bargaining.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, I'll just make a brief comment, that's a backup session if we should need it, and Fairgrounds has been courtesy enough to provide a location for it should we need it, so with that, I call for a vote?
Vote on motion 24-682. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-683, in the matter of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners recognizing Gertie Throwberg Bridge on her 100th birthday.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion?
If I could just comment briefly on this, Gertie didn't make it to the Board meeting or our Commissioners' meeting, but her granddaughter, Show Harper, reached out to me a couple weeks ago, I think, something like that, and wanted some recognition for her grandmother reaching her 100th birthday in September, and so we put this resolution together, and I just think it's really nice to pause and honor one of our senior citizens, and just nice little resolution and a very talented, very special lady, so that's the background.
It's quite a...
Yeah, she's a real quilter, and I didn't know her prior to her granddaughter reaching out, but very accomplished, big woman.
I'm not sure if that's the right word, landlord, but it's kind of a landlord birthday, right?
Right, right. So anyway, just a nice gesture and appreciate the ability to do that.
Happy birthday.
That's right.
Call for a vote?
Vote on motion 24-683. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-684, in the matter of approving a transfer of funds for Job and Family Services.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, a discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners, Bob Anderson with Job and Family Services. This is just our routine quarterly transfers once we close our books with the state system.
Any questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 24-684. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-685, in the matter of reappointing a member to the West Central Community Facility Governing Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners, Jane Hawes, Director of Communications. We have before you a request to reappoint Kathy Nicolosi to the West Central Community Facility Governing Board. She has been a longtime representative on this board, and it's a joint appointment that we make with Moro County, who have, the Commissioners there have already passed a resolution approving a reappointment.
Any questions or comments?
Just approve, just not only approve her service, but thank her for her service.
Call for a vote?
Vote on motion 24-685. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye. Thank you.
Resolution number 24-686, in the matter of approving supplemental appropriations.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, a discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners, Justin Novy, Director of Finance. This item's been submitted for various capital improvement projects, real estate settlement fees from second half, and developer tiff reimbursement.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 24-686. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Resolution number 24-687, in the matter of approving a service agreement with Sedgwick Claim Management Services Incorporated to provide claims administration services for Delaware County workers' compensation self-insured program.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners, Don Houston, Deputy Administrator, and as you know, we received proposals for our TPA services from firms that were interested in working with Delaware County. The committee that was put together to review those proposals had ranked Sedgwick as number one. We entered into negotiations with them for a successor agreement, and this agreement that you have before you today is what we're recommending that we proceed with. We have had a long-term relationship with Sedgwick since the county has been self-insured and since 2008, so it has been quite a while for us working with them. They've done a great job. Our assigned claims manager, Diana Bauer, is excellent, so we highly recommend proceeding with this resolution, and if you have additional questions, I will be happy to answer them for you.
Questions or comments? I know we have a good history with them, and you expressed that earlier, so if no other comments, call for a vote?
Vote on motion 24-687. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-688, in the matter of approving drainage maintenance petition and ditch maintenance assessments for Clark Shaw Crossing Section 1A, 2A, 3A, 4, 5, and 6.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, a discussion?
Good morning, Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer. This is our typical drainage maintenance petition for the street stormwater, to place the stormwater system on the county maintenance program. Clark Shaw Crossing includes 254 single-family lots and 136 multifamily units, new subdivision in Liberty Township.
Any questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 24-688. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-689, in the matter of approving a drainage maintenance petition and ditch maintenance assessments. Oops, I got the wrong heading there. Oh, Clark Shaw Crossing Section 1B, 2B, and 3B, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion?
Same explanation, just different phases within that subdivision.
Okay, questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 24-689. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye. Thank you.
Resolution number 24-690, in the matter of approving right-of-way permit summary.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, a discussion?
Just two utility permits for you today, and we're recommending approval.
Questions or comments?
Vote on motion 24-690. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-691, in the matter of approving the plats of subdivision for Berlin Farm, Piatt-Rolson Road, Woodcrest Crossing Section 6, Nelson Farms North, Clark Shaw Crossing Section 1, and Hassel Tall subdivision lot 298, Division 1.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Several plats for you today, total of 133 new single-family lots.
Okay, question or comments? I'll hit them myself. Call for a vote?
Vote on motion 24-691. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-692, in the matter of establishing a new organizational key for Stites Road improvements, OPWC, and renaming existing organizational key for 2024, OPWC.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, discussion?
This just provides for the accounting for the state grants on two different projects. The renaming of the 2024 is for the current Cheshire Road widening project, and then we also received an OPWC commitment for this year for the Stites Road project.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 24-692. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-693, in the matter of reducing the solid waste tipping fees for 2024 Delaware County Fair Trash.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners, Tiffany Magg, Director of Environmental Services. So this is our annual Fair Trash Resolution where Romke reduces its base fee by 50%, and then we waive our county surcharge, which is $3.50.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 24-693. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 24-694, in the matter of accepting an easement for sanitary sewer purposes from the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services on behalf of the Ohio State University.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
So this is the new Ohio State Medical Complex at the corner of Sawmill and Home Road, and this is just an easement for them to get their 12-inch sewer across their property and out to Sawmill Parkway.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 24-694. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Director Patterson, first one of the last page.
All right. Oh, I'll wait for you to get it up there. Okay, so we had several plan approvals, subdivision agreements, and acceptances that were signed by the county administrator in August, starting off with Berlin Mixed Use Development. That is the project that is, it's up in Berlin Business Park, it's the Sabatino Development. This is the portion that would extend sewers through Reed Parkway all the way to the west end of their development into the commercial buildings that they have. Not quite at the subdivision agreement stage yet, so we're not real sure when they're going to proceed forward, but however, they do have approved plans. Second one is ravines at Meadow Ridge. This is an ongoing project, this is Metro, it's an apartment complex. They have 432 apartments in this Phase 3. They also have Phase 4, which is another item that we have on here, which is another 144 apartments. So they really hitting the ground running with that apartment complex, which is over there just west of 71 and south of 36, 37. Then we have North Star London Road Phase 1. This is just a sewer extension that Nationwide is building. It will service their development as well as a fire station that I believe the township is going to be constructing in the future. And then as far as subdivision agreements, we have Berlin Bluff Section 1. This is a Pulte 40 single-family unit subdivision off of Cheshire and Piatt. Hyatt Meadows is 67 single-family units by lifestyles communities north of Hyatt's, just west of 23. This is just west of where we have that new pump station there at the corner of Hyatt's Road in 23. And then finally, on subdivision agreements, Three Strands Holdings. This is a small commercial warehouse off of Old Liberty Road and Home. We're not real sure what they're putting in this yet, but they do have a subdivision agreement for a commercial property there. And then on acceptances, Slate Ridge, this is another Pulte subdivision, this is off of Home Road. It's, I believe it's, yeah, just north of Home Road, east of 23. This has been in here, they've kind of been ongoing with this subdivision as well. Let's see if I can zoom out. Is this thing touchscreen? Jennifer, you know how I zoomed to the bottom of this? Oh, with the mouse, got it. So then we have the Greenery. This is just east of 23. This also flows into our new Hyatt's Road pump station, 121 single-family units by Onyx and East in this one. And then we also have Section 3 of the Slate Ridge Development, which was the Pulte off of Home Road. And then finally, Berlin Farms West, Section 2. This is an MI, single-family, 55 units in this, in Section 2. This is the one that's been going on, they have Berlin Farms West. On the other side of Piatt Road, they have Berlin Farms East, so they have, I think, a total of like 600 or so units up there over the course of those two subdivisions. So we've got a lot going on up in that area as well. So with that, I'll take any questions.
I have no question, any questions?
Thanks, Tiffany.
Just got a lot going on, thank you.
Yes, a lot of activity, thank you for tuning in. Okay, that brings us, I believe, to Administrator's Report?
Nothing today. I have nothing next.
I know Eric's going to have something. Commissioner Benton?
Just a couple things. We had One Delaware Lunch yesterday, very well attended, great presentations by Franz Geiger with NP Limited, the Polaris Group, and Tom Schmidt, who runs the Zoo, and Brian, who's the General Manager at Tangier. Things are really going well, Polaris is doing well, Tangier is full, so it was a very good presentation. Went to the Bonobo exhibit also at the zoo the day before, Tuesday, and that was just a neat addition to the zoo, one of the seven zoos in the country that still house and take care of Bonobos. Very nice exhibit, nice facility for them. Regional planning tonight, Jedi Call this afternoon, SEPCO Board Meeting tomorrow morning. We should get our final number for healthcare renewal for next year. We'll see, that's it.
Commissioner?
And I attended an opioid grant meeting for Region 18 last night.
I heard it was a lot of fun.
It went well.
It was long, I think, wasn't it?
It was long, it was long. Like to thank Ally especially for her minute taking and all her help along the way in getting this meeting organized and people there. So thank you, Ally, and that's it.
And I was also at the One Delaware, it was well attended, it had to be over 120 people or so. Well attended, it was well done, and Joe Perman was his usual enthusiastic self, as he, out in the parking lot, almost.
Ninety-degree heat.
Welcome people that came in.
Greeting everybody.
And all three speakers spoke very well about their projects, from Polaris to Allen Mall to the zoo, and I think we left there with a lot of optimism about things that are going on and will be going on, so.
Yeah, and all three of them were, talked about their plans for growth, expansion, which is really neat to see, they're all key players in our community, different roles, but very, very well done.
And as you also mentioned, regional planning inside, so with that, I believe we're ready, it was past 9:45, so we can move into the viewing. I believe Commissioner Lewis has a comment?
And I will recuse myself to avoid any appearance of a conflict, so I'll be in the peanut gallery.
Yeah, because you live in the area, I believe, is your...
I do, yes. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I am going to read the, kind of the rules of the road that we'll be following today. First, welcome to viewing for the consideration of petition from the Lake of the Woods Homeowners Association requesting dedication of Ferndale Place as a public right-of-way. Again, I'm Gary Merrill, and this is obviously Commissioner Benton, and Commissioner Lewis recused herself. As there's sign-in sheets circulating in the room, and we ask that each please sign the sheet to indicate your attendance. Today's viewing of the proposed dedication area is taking place at the Office of the Board of County Commissioners through the use of drone videography and photography. No testimony is taken at the viewing, this is simply a way for the Board to become familiar with the area that we'll be evaluating later. If the Board, after reviewing the proposed improvement, considers such improvements of sufficient public importance, it shall instruct the county engineer to make the inaccurate survey and plat of such improvements and submit all necessary materials to the Board for consideration at the final hearing scheduled for October 21st, 2024 at 9:45. At the hearing, we will hear a report from the Engineer's Office on the petition, and it is also a time for landowner testimony for or against the petition. And I'll turn the proceedings over to Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer, County Engineer's Office. Rob?
Thank you, Commissioner. Again, good morning, Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer. As you said, Commissioner, we, this is the viewing for dedication of Ferndale Place as a public road. This is being done pursuant to a petition that was filed May 17th by the Lake of the Woods Five HOA. Again, this is the viewing, the hearing is scheduled for October 21st, 2024 at 9:45 a.m. I have a number of maps to show you, I'll run through these fairly quickly, this is just to orient yourselves to the site, again, in Genoa Township, just barely, near Harlem Township in the southeast portion of Delaware County. A little closer view, you can see on the right-hand side is Red Bank Road, the curved road is Duncan's Glen Drive, which you may recall, a couple of years ago, your Board acted on to accept that as a public road, and then the reason we're here today is to consider what's highlighted in yellow, which is Ferndale Place. It is another road within the Lake of the Woods subdivision. Just another view of the road, this was originally platted as a private road in 1988 with a 60-foot This is just a screen clip of the subdivision plat, north would be to the right, you can see there were a number of lots platted along with this street, and you can see Duncan's Glen curving kind of in the upper-right portion of the graphic. Just another view of that, again, 60-foot existing right-of-way. We did capture some aerial imagery back in July, just to show you what the road looks like. I can tell you, since then, the road has actually been resurfaced by the HOA, and so this is just now slightly out of date, but it should get you a good, at least, picture of how the road sits in that setting. And please ignore the leftover graphics from the last presentation.
Yeah, I was going to ask what that had to do with this.
Yeah. Yeah, those snuck their way in there, so again, Ferndale Place, that was, we were going, we're going from south to north, so you can see now the road starts curving to the left, and finally meets Duncan's Glen Drive. There is a lot of tree cover within the subdivision. Here's another graphic showing what the pavement looks like. The pavement was previously in pretty good condition, but in discussion with the HOA and Genoa Township, it was our recommendation that the HOA would need to resurface the road, and so they've actually completed a micro-surfacing, what we call micro-surfacing, which is a very thin asphalt liquid overlay that basically extends the life of the current asphalt at a more, at a lesser cost than a full hot-mix asphalt overlay. So again, asphalt's in pretty good shape. The road at that time was built to the public road standards that were applicable in the 1980s, so it is sufficiently wide, it does have nice grass shoulders, so it's really in pretty good shape. So next steps, again, the petition has been filed. What we have previously asked for, as I just mentioned, in most cases, the road needs to be new or like-new at the time of dedication, and that's really kind of a matter of policy because I think it's only fair that a new road should not have an inordinate amount of maintenance needs versus the rest of the township roads. So again, HOA has a little bit more work to do, I believe there's some tree trimming that needs to be done, just to make sure there's enough vertical height clearance for vehicles to get down the street. That work will be done over the next two months before the hearing, which again is October 21st, 2024. So with that, that's all I have. I know Doug Riedel and it looks like Paul Wise from Genoa Township are here. I have nothing further, if there's anything they'd like to add?
Robbie, just to, maybe it's more appropriate for the hearing, but this resurfacing process is sufficient?
Yes, that's our belief, and again, we've been coordinating with the HOA over the last several months since the petition was filed, and even before the petition, we have and will again inspect the work prior to the hearing.
Okay, I will ask, if anybody wants to speak, again, this is not testimony today, but if there's something you want to point out or an observation, that's acceptable, but we can't take testimony today, so I'll just make that comment, and if no one raises their head. Yeah, Paul? Introduce yourself for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Paul Wise, Township Administrator with Genoa Township. The township has been working with the County Engineer's Office and resident Renee McQuary on this whole process since the petition has been filed. Couple points that the township had concern with, which are being addressed, was A, the resurfacing of the road, which has now been done. Secondly, we had concerns about bringing in our fire truck with the ladder truck, enough clearance for that, and they are addressing that with some tree trimming. And thirdly, our fire marshal, since the road width is slightly below what is needed for a two-lane passing, the fire marshal has requested that no parking be placed on the hydrant side of the roadway with five no-parking signs installed along the hydrant side of that roadway, which the HOA has agreed to and have solicited different vendors from the County Engineer's Office for approved signage. And it's also, it was brought up that their wishes are to keep the rural feel of the neighborhood, so we would not be in objection if the HOA provides those signs with a wooden backing similar to what's been done in Medallion Area, so we're in favor of this process moving forward at the hearing.
Some of that might be under testimony, so you may want to be back at the hearing, so you can restate that.
I will, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, Paul, before you leave, how's the Duncan Glens you've been?
It's been a good transition over to township maintenance. The Section Five still utilizes a private contractor for snow plowing, so we have a verbal agreement with them. If their private contractor gets there in the wintertime to plow before we do, we would reimburse them for that cost on Duncan's Glen, which the same agreement will be made for Ferndale Place. So whoever's there first maintains it. A lot of times, our people are out at night and hit it, so we're good.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Again, no testimony, but is anyone else who'd like to point out anything that they think would be beneficial as we prepare for the hearing in October? If not, the viewing is over. We're adjourned from that part of the meeting, and I look forward to seeing you on October 21st.
There is a resolution that we need to consider.
I'm sorry?
There is a resolution for you to consider. Resolution number 24-695, in the matter of instructing the county engineer to prepare and submit the necessary surveys, plaits, descriptions, and reports for the proposed dedication and establishment of Ferndale Place as a public right-of-way.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Eric Hostetler, General Counsel. The resolution before you would allow the engineer to proceed with preparation materials for the hearing. That is based on if the Board makes a determination that the proposed dedication is of sufficient public importance. I would point out that this process probably wasn't necessary, because there's a single owner of this right-of-way, and they could have just presented a dedication plat. But going through this process would end up the same way. We just have additional steps.
Any questions or comments?
Vote on motion 24-695. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis has recused herself from this item. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
All right.
I see that.
Okay. We now have a total clock here.
Then we will next consider a cost and fees for, and we'll have a public hearing for that for dogs seized and impounded. And I also will read kind of the rules of the road that we'll follow for this as well. So I welcome you to the hearing for consideration of costs and fees assessed against the owner, keeper, or harbor of any dog seized and impounded under Chapter 955 of the Revised Code. There's a sign-in sheet circulating in the room, and we ask that you please sign the sheet to indicate your attendance. Here's a review of how we will proceed. We will hear a presentation from Don Houston, Deputy County Administrator, and Mitch Garrett, Dog Ward, to review the cost analysis study and consider any proposed revisions to the cost and fees assessed against the owner, keeper, or harbor of any dog seized and impounded under Chapter 955 of the Revised Code. Follow the presentation. There will be a time for questions from the Board. After Board questions, the Board will hear from any interested persons who may wish to provide testimony. And just a note here that was made, it was no written comments received for the benefit of this meeting. Consideration of cost and fees assessed against the owner, keeper, harbor of any dog seized and impounded under Chapter 955 of the Revised Code may be considered at a future session, not necessarily today. With that, begin the hearing, and Don, introduce yourself.
Good morning, Commissioners. Don Houston, Deputy Administrator. And I have with me Mitchell Garrett, the county's dog warden. Come up and join me. So Mitchell and I have been looking into the costs associated with running the dog shelter. And I thought it would be helpful to start with some of the statistics that you see in front of you. So here shows an overview of the types of cases that the dog warden's office has been involved with. We included all of 2023 and then through June of 2024, so that you can see there the types of things that they have been handling when it comes to dogs within Delaware County. I think that our cases are trending a little higher than they have in the past. One of the things that I think takes more time than others would include the dog bite and those types of investigations. The criminal cases that go to municipal court. You see there at the bottom that we had 30 cases, excuse me, in 2023, and 22 cases so far year-to-date. That does not include the total counts on each of those cases. And just the total number of individuals that have been charged. So as I had mentioned, you know, I do think that the cases and the number of dogs are trending higher than what we have seen in the past. There were a total of 53 dog bite investigations from January of 2023 to June of, or through June of 2024. And I will let Mitch talk a little bit about what those investigations entail, because they involve the Health District and also some other hours of investigation on the part of our dog warden and our three assistant dog wardens. So if you want to give just a Reader's Digest version.
Yeah, absolutely. So, hi, Mitchell Garrett, Delaware County Dog Warden. So dog bite investigations aren't just kind of like a cut-and-dry, this is what happens, and then we go to the next step. So it starts with the reporting of the dog bite. Usually, it's the victim or the victim's family that calls us and says, "Hey, I got bit by a dog. What do I do next?" Or, "My neighbor's dog did this." What we do from that point is we gather all the information from the victim or the victim's family. We get that all sent over to the Health Department. Any kind of breaking in the skin, anytime blood's drawn, the Health Department has to know about that. So what that does is it starts our rabies investigation. So then we have to make contact with the Health Department. Once we get that taken care of, then we have to find the dog owner. Sometimes they have a dog license, sometimes they don't. So if they don't, then we're going to have to go knock on the doors, see which house it came from, who is going to answer. You know, that might be there at work today, so we're gonna have to leave a notice. They're gonna have to call us after hours. They might answer the door. A lot of people work from home now, so we're able to catch them a lot easier that way. Then we have to reach out to their veterinarians. We need proof that their dogs are up to date on their shots. Otherwise, now the victim has to worry about, well, do I have to get rabies shots myself? From that point forward, that's when it starts to become more of a cut-and-dry thing, you know? Does the victim want to press charges, you know? You know, oh, it's my neighbor. Maybe we can get this kind of situation figured out more neighborly. Or no, the dog came across the fence and attacked my kid, and we need to have something taken care of. When it gets to that, that's when we start seeing those numbers going into criminal court. Dogs aren't allowed to do that kind of stuff, and we can't charge the dog, so we charge the owner. That's when we can also then look into different things, such as designations. Different dogs, you know, commit different types of crimes. And at that point, then, the dog can be deemed a dangerous animal to, under the state law. So those kind of things all go into these 53 dog bites that happened between January and just June of this year.
Any questions? All right. We'll move on then to the average shelter stay. You will see there that our average stay for impounded dogs has, well, more than doubled for 2024 through June. But then the strays have remained the same, average of six days in the shelter. And those dogs that are surrendered by their owners has increased to an average of five days over 2023. The goal for the dog warden's office is to reunite a dog with their owner. Hopefully, they are licensed and we know who they belong to. Excuse me. If not, they work with social media essentially to get information out to the public to try to help to reunite a dog with a specific owner. That obviously takes time and energy. I will say that their Facebook page has a lot of followers and a lot of people who then share the information with others. So there's a lot of dog lovers, I think, in our community and surrounding counties as well. That being said, we have only adopted 21 dogs in the last year and a half out of the shelter directly. And that is because we have such a good working relationship with the Humane Society and Area Rescues to take all of our dogs who are able to be adopted out. So you'll see there for the last year and a half, 283 dogs have been transferred to the Humane Society and then 35 to other rescue organizations. So those partnerships are really positive and relationships that we really count on. So we're very blessed to have such great working relationships with other area partners. So now getting into the budget. We really looked at this from a holistic standpoint in terms of the revenues that the dog shelter brings in, which we'll get into here in a second. And then also looking at the expenditures. The expenditures that you see in front of you from 2022 and then the projected revenue, or expenditure, excuse me, through 2026 are including both the dog shelter and also the auditor's office. The auditor, George Kaitza, is here with us today, and I'm sure he will be speaking here shortly when we are addressing the potential increase to the dog license and kennel fees. But we did look at where our shortfalls have been with the revenues. And on that next slide, you will see... Where did it go? Hang on. It's not touchscreen. There we go. This is a breakdown, thanks Mitch, of the revenues that the dog shelter has brought in, as well as the auditor's office, for the licenses. And you will see there that the licenses bring in the majority of our revenue. We also looked at the penalties and impounding fines, the surrender fines, the costs that we get from municipal court when residents are charged with dog-related offenses. We included donations and also grants that we receive. And you'll see there that the inter-fund revenue that's highlighted in yellow, those are the funds that help to make up the difference in the shortfall. That is monies that are included in the budget from the county's general fund. Any questions about that specifically?
Not this part, I think.
Is it not coming? It doesn't like me. So here you'll see the current dog license fees that are charged to our residents each year at $12, $36 for a three-year registration, and then a permanent registration at $120. This next resolution after the hearing, you will be considering whether or not the county should increase those license fees for dogs that are licensed or reside in Delaware County that are older than three months, correct? The kennel fees doesn't bring in a lot of revenue, but it does some for the kennels that operate within Delaware County. And the estimated revenue increase is here before you. If we were to increase the license fees, that would probably bring in an additional $50,000, almost $51,000, and then the kennel fees, an additional $3,600, or I'm sorry, $3,600. So it would help a little bit in terms of us potentially increasing the license fees to help offset the general fund and keeping, I guess, those costs down for operating the mandatory dog shelter per statute. Okay. So here you're seeing the fee schedule as it currently is. Where it's listed there as current. And then we looked at the possibility of what it might look like should we propose changes to this fee schedule that we have conducted the study for. What I would like to do is have some additional conversation and feedback in terms of where we might be looking at increasing our fee schedule. You'll see that an owner surrender, now we're asking for a donation, generally speaking. We're getting $36 for those types of cases. And what we would be looking at is to leave that the same in terms of when an owner is surrendering a dog at $36. The first board day and impound is at $36 as well. And then any additional day would be $24 that we would be charging. Adoption fees are currently at 18. That's essentially the license fee, which is currently $12, and then an additional $6 charge for the adoption directly from the shelter. And we would be proposing potentially increasing that to $25, which would mean a $15 license fee should that resolution be approved, and then an additional $10 for the dog adoption.
Does that include their shots and everything?
Yeah, so every dog that leaves out of our shelter is fully vetted. So, or they leave with a certification that says, "Take it to this vet, and it's already paid for." What we want to do is make sure that every dog that leaves our shelter is healthy or on the path to being as healthy as possible.
And that's much less than what the Humane Society charges, correct?
Yes, yes. The Humane Society charges $250 for, correct, $250? $200 maybe for a dog and then an adult dog, and then I think it's $350 for puppies. So it is much different. But then the Humane Society is able to have revenue generated from the dogs that we provide them for their purposes. And all of the vet charges are paid for through a grant that the county receives. That's not paid for out of general fund monies. Okay. And then finally, you'll see the area fee schedules for our neighboring counties. You will see here that we have a higher impound fee than our neighbors. We also have a higher boarding fee, except for Knox and Union Counties. And then our adoption fee is significantly lower. My assumption there is that these other counties probably don't have a working relationship or they don't work as much with their Humane Society. And so they may be then just adopting the dogs directly from their shelter or from the county. That's all I have for the presentation. Any questions?
Just for clarification, we're gonna vote on the fees today, but you're gonna have more conversation, more evaluation on the remainder of the fees that we're talking about.
Correct.
We'll vote on that a later date.
Yes, the statute requires the public hearing to consider the fee schedule separate from the license. It is interesting that there wouldn't be a public hearing required to increase license fees. However, there is a deadline of August 31st that the Board has to ensure that they are passing a resolution by to increase the license fees beginning in December of this year.
I have two other comments. One, I would say that sort of Mitch, you did an outstanding job. I think I can speak for my fellow Commissioners. You've handled a couple of really tough situations extremely well this year.
Thank you.
And we're lucky to have you, and we appreciate the job you do, so.
Thank you.
And the second thing, and I don't think it makes any difference, my understanding. My dog Leo, every year we have to do the registration. I don't understand why there's not some discount for multiple years. I understand the Revised Code does not allow for that, which is absurd. You have administrative costs and you have to do it every year. I have to write a check every year. It would make more sense if the Revised Code allowed us to have some sort of reduction or frequency discount. It's, it makes absolutely no sense. I don't have much clearer I can say it.
We're gonna send you to the legislature.
I'll take Leo with me. And we'll try to make the case. I mean, the administrative costs that the mailing I get every year, my wife and I get every year, for the benefit of our dog, I just think it's, some discount would be beneficial. I'll stop there. I feel like I'm preaching. I apologize. And I may restate that. And I may restate that when we vote on this. Go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question. When was the last time we did increase the license fees?
I think it was in twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen, sounds right.
No, I think the nineties.
Yeah.
Nineteen nineties.
Since you've had an increase?
Twenty thirteen.
Oh my.
There probably ought to be a more systematic timetable than that going forward.
I believe it was twenty thirteen, when it went from ten to twelve dollars, yes.
That's right, it was when the law was changed to allow the one-year, three-year lifetime.
Without a discount, I might add.
Right.
Well, you know, again, I, I think philosophically, the revenues generated from the various activities of the dog shelter should fund the dog shelter operations fully, so I think we're heading in that direction.
I don't believe these increases are going to get us to that point.
Going to get close.
We're still going to shorts and we didn't.
Closer, yes, that's true. And Commissioner Merrill, I echo what you said in terms of our dog shelter staff, Mitch and the other three assistants, Chuck, Dan, and Mark, do a fantastic job.
I'm not excluding them. I hate Mr. Stager in front of me. Let's, let's, all of you did a great job.
Thank you.
And please pass that on.
We, we honestly do not get complaints from the public. They are doing such a great job just mediating cases and it's tough. I mean, it's tough work, especially when you're dealing with a dog owner and their neighbors and others within the community. And we, I'm, I'm very thankful for the work that they do.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add is, you know, we, we all love our dogs and we value our dogs and they're like part of the family. And I think the whole county, this population of our county appreciates the quality of services being provided and taking care, and in many cases, getting a dog and family back together when there's a challenge or an issue. And that also extends to Humane Society. The job they do is an extension of what we do, because we, we'll take them temporarily as we, as a transition to the Humane Society. Three days, that typical three?
So that's what the state says that we have to do. Usually it's, it's longer. We want to give the dogs time to calm down, but also every shelter is bursting at the seams anymore. So we hold them for a little bit longer, just so that way we can make sure that they've got the space and the time and the staff that can hold on to them too. A lot of times, most of the rescues, like the Humane Society and the other ones in this area that we use or we help, that help us, I guess. A lot of the times, I say, I say, I text them a picture of a dog and I give them the descriptions and everything, and they say, okay, let me see where I can put it now. And what they do is they end up finding a foster home three days from today that can take them. So then the dog goes from us straight into a home that usually ends up keeping them, you know, because everybody falls in love with the dogs. But that's how we're able to, to move them and utilize the partnerships that we've fostered.
And the point I'm trying to make, the partnership between the county and Humane Society is extremely important because it works because of that partnership. And I would encourage anybody who has the ability to support the Humane Society in their efforts, because this is, it's not an expensive process, but the love of dogs, the love of cats, I think, do we do other pets out there? I'm not sure, but.
Not at us, we don't know.
But they, I think they may. So I just want to get that on the record as well. Any other comments?
Again, Mitch, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Like, like Commissioner Merrill said, you've had a couple of tough situations this year and handled it so well.
And the way you handle those press conferences is fantastic.
Thank you.
Mitch Lewis.
Yes, Dawn, thank you. This was very well researched and put together, and I know Mitch, that you were instrumental in that. I guess I'd just like to ask, what, what is your biggest challenge or some of your biggest challenges that, that you run into?
Oh my, I wasn't ready for that kind of question. Lately, honestly, what we're seeing is, is an increase in dogs that aren't being reclaimed. We're getting a lot of stray dogs that are coming in that we can tell, probably have a family out there somewhere, but it's just they, they can't afford them or they, you know, they felt bad bringing them in, so they say that they found them type of situations. They don't want to get in trouble. In, I don't know what time it is, but around ten-thirty, somebody's supposed to bring me a litter of puppies that somebody left in their driveway last night.
Oh my gosh.
So that is the current biggest struggle that we're running into right now.
Oh my gosh.
And I think because of COVID, a lot of people, because they rent their homes, they, a pet was providing some sort of.
Yeah, a lot of people got dogs during COVID.
And then after COVID.
That didn't get the socialization and training that they needed, and that's where we get a lot of our dog bites lately, is, oh, we've had this dog for two or three years, it's never done this before. But for two or three years, people have been working from home and the dog's only ever seen the four people that live there, and now they're out at dog parks causing problems.
Oh, okay, okay. And thank you so much for your work and, and all the staff. Do a great job.
Thank you.
So with that, there's no other comment. We are, we are concluding this part of the.
Do you want?
At ten twenty-six. Oh, well, we're going to do that under the resolution. Are you going to speak under the resolution now?
I'm, I'm happy to speak under public comment of, under this segment, or I can speak when you're going to give us the.
I assume we're going to speak when we did the resolution, but if you, is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Hearing is now closed. We'll mark the time as ten twenty-seven. And item number twenty-five, resolution number two-four-dash-six-nine-six, in the matter of establishing dog registration and kennel fees for Delaware County. So move.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. George Kaitza, Delaware County Auditor. I'd like to bring my staff up, Melanie Mays and Sherry Lewis.
I don't think they've prepared for that.
Well, they're not going to speak. I promised them that they wouldn't have to speak, that I would, I would do all the talking. But I just wanted you to kind of, to recognize my staff. Melanie is the manager of dog licenses and vendor licenses, and I'll have some statistics to share the kind of work that Melanie does. And Sherry is my Director of Tax Administration and Consumer Services, and the dog licenses and other vendors' licenses fall under her area of responsibility. So I just wanted to recognize my staff that really do all the work to bring in the, the fees for the dog licenses. So thank you both.
Take those out.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. So Commissioners, this morning I'm here to speak in support of the modest increase from, of three dollars to our current fees, which would take them from twelve dollars to fifteen dollars. And then there are corresponding increases in the three-year license as well as the permanent license. The three-year license is simply three times the one-year license, and the permanent license is ten years times the one-year license. I also wanted to share with you the fact that even with that increase, we will be below the fees charged by the surrounding counties. Currently Franklin County, Morro and Union all charge eighteen dollars for the one-year license. Marion charges twenty dollars for the one-year license. Wicking County charges twenty-two dollars for the license. And Knox County, which is the lowest of that group, charges sixteen dollars for the one-year license. So we are, we will still be, even with the increase, be below our, the surrounding counties. As background information in terms of the workload that we encounter, last year we, we processed just under seventeen thousand dog licenses. We, the exact number was sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven. The one-year licenses made up fifteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-four licenses. Three-year licenses were nine hundred and eighty-nine licenses. We had a hundred and seventy-four permanent licenses, and then we had two hundred and thirty kennel licenses. The sales come in from different sources. We receive about eleven thousand license renewals through our online system. By mail, we receive fifty-one hundred licenses. Then we have, we sell approximately five hundred licenses in the office. And then we also have fi, we sell remote locations where we sell approximately five hundred licenses as well. For this coming year, as part of the license renewal application, we are adding a line for donations, so hopefully that will help to increase the, the donations coming in. And, and we do, we do receive those. So again, I'm here to support the very modest increase, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
How did, how does that work, Auditor Kaitza? So someone pays this for one year, let's say they get a one-year license, and do they get a, you know, a reminder?
Yes, they do receive a reminder, you know, every year. And a lot of times, we'll, we'll get a notice saying, well, I'm sorry, our, you know, our dog passed away.
Okay, okay.
So, but yeah, we do send reminder notices out to everyone.
Thank you.
We also keep track of all the licenses. I probably should mention that as well, because sometimes we'll get, someone will call in and say, we found this dog with this license, do you know who the owner is?
Oh, that's great.
And we're able to pull that out from our system.
Do you have any idea what the compliance rate is? I mean, of the total number of dogs in the county?
Yeah.
How many actually get licensed every year or once in a lifetime?
Commissioner Benton, I, I really don't know, and I hate to hazard a guess, but that has been a concern that I've always had, that we need to be careful, that we don't have very large increases in the licenses, because that could adversely affect the compliance rate. One of the things that, that has affected, we used to do about twenty thousand annual licenses, but with the change to getting the three-year license and the permanent license, then we have seen that figure drop to the seventeen thousand figure from what, prior to twenty thirteen would have been twenty to twenty-one thousand licenses.
You said nine hundred and fifty three-year license, I think you said, so.
Uh, nine eighty-nine, yes, sir.
Yeah, pretty close. And so fewer people are getting their dog's license, and even if you add those back in, there's still less than twenty thousand, so.
Right, right, yeah.
So I have a question, maybe it's better for Mitch, do we find someone who we caught who has not licensed their dog, or we just slap them on the hand and?
Well, we do have to pay for both the current year and then, isn't there a, or maybe Mitchell can.
Aye, okay. So i, in a case situation, if we encounter an individual that does not have a dog license, whether we're out there because their dog did something, or whether they're calling about their neighbor's dog and then they also don't have a dog license, there's two different routes that we can go. The first one is we sell them a dog license right then and there. You have to buy your dog license and then you're good to go. Or we can sell them a dog license and also make them pay or charge them for not having a dog license, because state statute does say that all dogs have to be licensed. So a lot of times, it goes in the way of get your dog's license right now and it's done and over with, because we've also charged people for not having dog licenses and then they still don't buy a dog license. So then they're just going to court, paying a fine, and then being done with it. So a lot of times we'll, we'll say, hey, I won't write you this ticket, but you have to buy the dog license today. And so that's, that's hopefully answering your question there.
What is the charge then, if they don't have a license?
Um, as far as like monetary value?
Yes.
Okay, so the state law says it's no, less than twenty-five, no more than a hundred. Court, the court fees tack onto it. Usually it comes to about one eighty.
Wow.
Uh, but then most of that gets eaten up by court fees and then we see roughly twenty dollars.
Okay. Wow, okay.
I don't know what the average is in the county. One dog per house doesn't seem unreasonable probably, and if we only have eighteen thousand, that's a fairly, I don't know what percentage I have off the top of my head, but that's probably way short of compliance, full compliance.
Absolutely.
Uh, I don't see the penalties really discouraging any, encouraging anybody to license their dog, because it really, that, that don't amount to much.
Comes out to about the same, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Mitch, you brought a guest with you this morning?
Oh, Baxter.
Yeah.
Yeah, he had to go to somebody else's office because.
Oh, okay.
Uh, every time somebody would say hi to him, he would start wagging his tail against the desks, and it was making a lot of ruckus back there.
Okay, I heard some of it.
He's upstairs with Cindy, I think.
All right, all right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for George related to this topic? Again, I do think revised code should allow for, for, because administrative charges, the mailing, et cetera, et cetera. Those expenses could be reduced to the benefit of everybody, but I'll, I'm not going to give my speech again.
I, I understand, Commissioner, and I, again, that's part of the revised code, so.
Well, revised code does not always encourage good business practices, has been my experience. Is there any other questions or comments? Call for vote.
Vote on motion two-four-dash-six-nine-six. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you, George.
I believe.
Would you like, we had, consider something?
Yeah, I think we have, we have business under other business, that's correct.
Resolution number two-four-dash-six-nine-seven, in the matter of approving a letter concerning certain county investment issues.
So move.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion. Call for vote.
Vote on motion two-four-dash-six-nine-seven. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We have need to go into executive session today.
With that, we will conclude the executive proceeding.
Resolution number two-four-dash-six-nine-eight, in the matter of adjourning into executive session for consideration of employment and compensation of a public employer, public official, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes, to consider the sale of property at competitive bidding, for pending or imminent litigation, for collective bargaining, and for security arrangements and emergency response protocols.
So move.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two-four-dash-six-nine-eight. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
We are now in executive session.
Thank you.